No, you do.
I have to read this now?
Yep.
Okay. Action. I declare this meeting as a public hearing of the School Board of Lake County, Florida, for the adoption of the tentative millage rates and the tentative budget for 2015-2016 fiscal year. Superintendent, please read the statement required on the millage for the record.
Good evening. The first substantive issue to be discussed is the rollback rate. The rollback rate is defined as the millage rate necessary to generate the same amount of money that was raised the prior school year, but using the new property values after adjusting for new construction. The total millage to be levied is more than the rollback rate by 2.60 percent. The required local effort millage rate to be levied is more than the rollback rate by 2.28 percent.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the board concerning this increase? You wanted to speak about the budget, right? No, I think you're on the, I think you want to talk about the next part, on the budget.
Do you want to speak to the millage rates?
You don't want to speak to the millage rate? Right, right. It'll be just one sec. I have this whole script I have to read, so stand by. At this time, a brief presentation by our Chief Financial Officer will be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Mathias. I will skip the explanation. We just did it in workshop a minute ago. It is on the website under Section 8 of the summary, and it simply explains the timeline that we're dealing with.
Thank you.
Okay, the first actionable item that I want to recommend that the board adopt Resolution 2015-16 Determining Tentative Millages to be Levied for the Fiscal Year 2015-16. I'm sorry, it's Resolution Number 2015-06 for the 2015-16 school year. Included are required local effort of 4.949 mills, basic discretionary of 0.748 mills, and capital outlay millage of 1.500 mills, for a total of 7.197 mills. The revenues generated by this levy total generating operating of $99,921,630. Capital outlay, $26,309,130, for a total of $126,230,643.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation that the board approve Resolution 2015-05 Determining Tentative Millage Rate for the Fiscal Year 2015-16 as stated?
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, it said 2015-06.
It's 1505.
Okay, I must, okay, then I need to correct that it's 2000, I recommend that it's 2000, the board adopt Resolution 2015-05.
Yes, ma'am.
So moved.
Second.
Public input. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, at this time, I'd like to recommend that the board approve Resolution 2015-06 Adopting the Tentative Budget for 2015-16 Fiscal Year in the Amount of $553,117,610.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation that the board approve Resolution 2015-06 to adopt a tentative budget for the 2015-16 fiscal year in the amount of $553,117,610?
So moved.
Second.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the board concerning this tentative budget? Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, School Board members and Superintendent Moxley. I'm Carol Cadwell from Umatel Elementary. Been teaching there for 24 years. And what I want to address today is the disparity between different schools on classroom teacher supply money. At Umatel Elementary, we get $50 a year for teacher supplies, and I know around Lake it's 800. I brought this up last year before you all, and I know, Mr. Mathias, you said, wow, and he said, maybe we need to look at this, and I don't think it's been looked at. I called Mark Dodd earlier today, and he understands. I'm sure Stephanie and I called you, and you didn't pick up because you're, and that's fine. But there is a great, I mean, $50 in a classroom is nothing, and I'm not knocking my principal. I mean, she only gets so much money, and she's using it for other things. I know towards the end of the school year, like the ice maker and the cafeteria brook. So, I mean, I'm sure she has her reasons why she's not giving me more than $50. But you might say, what are you spending on? Dry erasable markers. You know, if you just use one a week on a board, and I just looked up at Wal-Mart, four for $6, they're $1.50 a piece. Well, you want to apply by 36 weeks, one a week, right? I mean, 36, yeah, 36 weeks. I mean, we're talking almost $50 right there in dry erasable markers. I know you want us to use STEM activities. STEM activities cost money. If I did one a month, and if I did nine of them, and if it was $10, and that would be on the cheap end, that's $90. A lot of times, we have to buy our own ink for the printer that we share. I mean, the list, I started listing different things, but it would be ridiculous for me to, you know, if you've been in a classroom, we spend our own money. And for $800, it'll take me 16 years to make 18, I mean, yeah, $800. And in that, in that 16 years, the other teacher got $12,800. I like buying trade books for my classroom. So you all know that I'm spending my own money. I don't, I did the math. I said, if we had 2,800 teachers, and you gave each $400, it's over $1 million. But I also know that Seminole District gives all their teachers a $500 gift card to go spend on what they want. So around the state, there are teachers who are getting more money. Even in our own district, there are teachers who are getting more money. I understand they're a charter school, and they get more of their funds. And our school is supporting the district. We're just supporting all those people. But I feel like you guys need, I just, I'm hearing about the budget, and maybe we need to find that one point, you know, over $1 million to give each teacher maybe $400. That's really what I'm addressing. I addressed it last year, and I'm addressing it again, and it might get pushed under it, but I thought when I was driving over here, I have a budget at home, and I have to prioritize. And I think the classrooms are probably just doing a STEM activity. I mean, that's where the priority should be. Maybe not people in the county who have cell phones or something. I don't know. I don't know the whole budget. But I think that maybe if we start looking, that could be something that could be addressed. So thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Can I just make a comment? Are you familiar with Apple Mart?
Yes.
And have you shopped at Apple Mart?
Yes.
Okay.
But there's a lot of things at the Apple Mart. Apple Mart does not have spaghetti noodles. Apple Mart doesn't have.
Sure. And there's supplies that they don't have that you need, but there are supplies that they have that you can use in the classroom.
Right. In our church or different organizations donate stuff to the school. So I will go in there, and I get notebook papers, spiral notebooks, pencils, things like that, crayons, markers. But there's still so many things that we use in the classroom. Holidays, I mean, teachers do things for kids, especially at the elementary level. I know one of our kindergarten teacher last year, which I ran into at the store, she was spending over $100 for a Mother's Day program with her kids. I mean, we do it. We do it, we do it. But in our own district, we've got, here's 50, and here's 800. I mean, you guys have to say, wow, right? It's a big difference, so.
Thank you.
We're right here. So, you have a, yeah.
All in favor?
We have some discussion.
Oh, sorry, where's the discussion? That's where we are.
One item of concern which I think piggybacks on Mrs. Cadwell's concerns there is that the school discretionary budget is down $100,000 this year. My understanding is that we're expecting an increase in students.
Yes, sir.
And so I think I've got a concern that we're asking teachers to stretch that dollar even further than what they've had to do in the past. But I can't, I guess I haven't gotten the summary yet of which schools are expected to take a hit in that budget.
Ms. McLeod, can you?
Yes, and I've already spoken with Ms. Dodd about it.
Okay. Can you?
We ran the reports, and I'm going to meet with him tomorrow or Thursday, and we'll get the information out to the rest of the board.
Okay. Oh, okay, so you're researching that question?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
What I have in the budget information is just a summary of what he'd asked for, and rightfully so, is a school-by-school list.
Oh, okay. All right. I think the other thing, too, is that I think this is an important, just for the board to understand. It is very difficult to compare a non-charter and a charter school, okay? Because there are some things that a charter school can do with some flexibility that another school or the traditional model may not be able to do. I will tell you, I do agree with Ms. Cadwell that there is differences from school to school that are non-charter schools. So her school may be $50, you can go to another school, and it'd be $150. Part of, and that's part of that local decision. And so as the local level, they are having to decide their school-based operating budget based on the needs of their particular school. For example, if they are needing to buy certain supplies for, say, a science lab or a computer lab or whatever, as a faculty and staff, they can make that decision, and they may choose to make a large expenditure this year, which means the individual per teacher budget may be less, but those supplies are being bought as a general school thing. Some schools will budget, a budget for this particular supply, and the individual teachers don't have to buy that supply. There's a whole litany of ways. So I'm not saying one's right or one's wrong, but that you do see a difference in per teacher based on the needs of the school and based on how that individual school's budget is allocated out. But one thing is consistent, is that the per-dollar amount per FTE is consistent. So when finance gets the budget, we have a set amount per FTE, so they get X number of dollars per student in that school. So if you have 1,000 students, you're going to get 1,000 times whatever that A is. If you have 600, then you're going to get 600 times A. So that is consistent from school to school. But how it's divvied up at the school level is very different. And we have given them that local autonomy.
In the proposed budget, though, the overall pot is $100,000 less than last year. What's the rationale?
Well, and that's what Mrs. McLeod is going to respond to you about.
I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me, because I thought it was more. And I don't want to tell you something off the top of my head that's not right.
But to the comment that she gets $50, and if the school, if all the schools are getting the same FTE, doesn't the individual school SAC committee have something, some way in on this?
The SAC committees have to review the budget and be part of that discussion.
So that might be somewhere you want to speak also to your SAC committee.
Each school has a discretionary budget or an operating budget, if you will. I think we call it a discretionary budget, and they can move money into different categories. And so some principals choose to put more in printing than another. Some may choose, like I know at the high school level, one year, we were repurchasing new science equipment that year, and so we all agreed that this amount right off the top was going to outfit science labs and bring those with more current equipment in that. So that year, we knew that there would be less in some of the other areas. And so we had a rotation that way. So depends on the school, depends on what the needs are, depends on how they, but every school SAC, to answer Mr. Mathias' question, is to review their budget.
And there's no, there's no Title I school versus non, it's straight FTE?
Um, Title I is to supplement, not to supplant. And so Title I schools get their money above and beyond that FTE. So we don't look at it as, here's all your monies, and we're dividing up. We look at the operating, and then Title I is on top.
Right.
So yes, they may get, they are getting more money, because they're getting the supplemental things to address the struggling needs of the students served in that population.
Right.
Any more comments?
I've got one final. I guess it's, I understand that this is a tentative approval of this particular budget, but my concern is, from my short experience on this board, that anything done in tentative seems to lack the incentive to make any changes in final that would, I think, really be appropriate. And I point to specifically all the staffing positions that we've added this year at the district level, and most of which were done through the context of the strategic finance plan, that, you know, we kept being reminded, well, you can, once again, have the final say when it gets to be the budget time. And so I think that that time is now. And I struggle with so many pieces of information missing. One is the decrease in student, in school discretionary dollars, the $5 million of district department budgets that we have yet to see a breakdown on, where all those increases are, and not knowing how this budget even compares to the engaged numbers that we've, you know, invested so much in a few years ago. So I think those are my biggest concerns moving forward.
Well, first of all, I want to go back and say staffing positions is a one vote. I mean, it's, there's no tentative, and then 28-day advertisement. That's an agenda item, it comes on for a vote. It either gets voted up or it gets voted down. Policies and budgets require tentative and final hearings, and they require a 28-day advertisement for the very reason for people to have two opportunities to speak to it because of the magnitude of it. And for example, so I guess I take a little exception to the fact that we have not been open to make any changes. Student code of conduct is one of them. There were changes that were made. In fact, we even came back and did a second tentative to make those changes, and now that's coming back for a final. There were changes made to that. We tweaked, there were several language changes. So I don't, I guess that's one example where, and the board directed that, and that was done. And we went back and re-advertised that a second time. And there have been other policy things where we've either pulled them, or we made changes and brought those back, and we've done another tentative, or we did it and then brought it back because it wasn't substantive and came back for final approval. So I don't want to have it just left that this administration just totally ignores any recommendations you make because that's not true, or I don't believe that's true. But the budget, you make amendments, and you make changes to that all the time. But a staffing, once you approve a position, and it goes out for hire, and somebody's filled with that, yes, it is hard pressed to come back and say, okay, we're not going to, okay, the position's there today, okay, five weeks later, no, the position isn't.
And that was my specific question, and that was where you had said, well, it becomes really final through the budget process. You'll get a chance to look at this again. And I think this time is now, and so.
Well, and the strategic.
That's my big concern. My big concern, you know, especially when we look at the school discretionary dollars declining, and the significant increase in district department salaries and benefits, I just don't know how to support this one going further, not knowing if there are enough resources being directed to the classroom.
Thank you. I don't know what else to communicate. I mean, I want to answer every question you have. You know, Mrs. McLeod, I know, was on the phone with you today. I know that she met with you last week. I want you to have every information to, for you to feel comfortable about. I do know that the budget tends to be a fluid document as expenses come in. I mean, some of these expenditures in the budget, I mean, it's a, you know, 500-plus million-dollar budget, and there are some, just like your home, your electricity bill may be higher this month than lower next month. Our fuel, they're estimates, and sometimes they, throughout the year, if we have a full fuel increase, we have to come in and make budget amendments. It is a fluid document. So we want it to be as exact. I am charged through statute to bring you a balanced budget based on all the input collective. It is your budget. I stand here to take your direction.
And maybe to ease some concern, that we are approving this amount. That's what we're approving, and that while maybe we're getting too much in the weeds about individual areas, that those still can be addressed up until September, right?
Yes, sir, for the final hearing, and then.
And I also, and also, yeah.
For the superintendent, where she said, really, that's not entirely true because there are other.
Well, the staffing part, she said, is locked in. But where we're talking about school supplies, I think that those are areas that you should continue to dig in. I think we still should, we still should do the critical analysis of those components that are of concern, because if they're a concern to Mr. Dodd, they're a concern to all of us. But today, all we're speaking about is this amount. I mean, just saying that.
Right. But if we continue to go down this road further and further, it becomes more difficult for us to pull dollars out of that staffing in September, when the position is filled, versus now, we could say, this is not our direction.
And I think, I think the other problem that we have here is the way the budget cycle is. It's not anyone's fault, or anyone's not wanting to do something. The fact of the matter is, is you're in the budget cycle, and we've already started the school year. And we're required by statute to appoint people by June 30th for this upcoming year. So it is a little backwards there, and it is challenging with it. And that's why I'm saying, it's not that I don't want to follow your direction, or what you want to do with your dollars, or how you want to move it, but again, you have to staff schools, and you have to have the summer to hire teachers so that we have the most qualified teachers in front of students day one. I mean, so the staffing represents about 85% of your budget here, and that's the line share of what you have in here. But again, supplies, all those things, those can be changed around, but I don't want to mislead you in the budget when I didn't want to give you no or yes, because it, some things on that budget are set, and you know you're not going to change those, because they're set, because people are sitting in those positions. And you have to have a principal at every school. You have to have a teacher in a classroom. But the other things, yes, those can be moved. So I want to make sure that I'm being very accurate answering your question and transparent there. But by the same token, we also, principals are here running their schools, too, and we have to allow them to run their schools. And I sure would hate us to get into a situation where we're now telling a principal that every budget item that they do, or any time they want to move a dollar from, you know, printing to postage, that they have to bring that back. I think there has to be some level of trust.
That's clearly not my direction. Shuffling between supply lines. Where I'm struggling with this one is, namely, that staffing. You know, once we get to September, if we say, in order for us to direct money to the classroom, we shouldn't have spent $130,000 on a director of leadership, too late at that point, you very well could have hired somebody. And then what do we do? You know, and the number of positions in that strategic finance plan was more than one. What if we say, you know, instructional coaches? Boy, based on the findings that we got, we shouldn't hire, is it nine? I think it's nine additional instructional coaches for the first-year teachers, because we won't be able to pull that money easily, because there will be people in those positions. And so that's where I struggle. So I feel like now's the time, we need to be acting on that.
Well, and see what hap, and see now, this cycle, because in September, you're going to start the review of the strategic finance plan. And what you do and the votes you make between September and December on that strategic finance plan will guide the staffing for the next year. And see, those things, those decisions were made in September of last year and October of last year. And those were the things that were, and that was the approved plan that we had, that we used to guide the staffing coming into this year. And so you are going to, in September, for next year.
Right. But that was done outside the context of this budget, that we didn't know how much money we would even have to work with, when we're giving all this approval to this strategic finance plan. That's what makes this part of this process problematic, because those things seem to be, you know, almost penned in now at this point, and those dollars are now untouchable to say, school discretionary dollars have gone down $100,000. And we, what if we need that $100,000 from that director of leadership position?
But if you'll remember, I'm sorry. If you'll remember, the concept of the strategic finance plan was to look for realignment opportunities, to reinvest in innovation that we would never get to, because we were always in, no, we never saw an increase in funding. So that whole strategic finance plan was to look for realignment opportunities and efficiencies, and that money be taken to reinvest in initiatives, in instructional priorities that were set. And so that whole three-year strategic finance plan is in there, so you may save some money there, and it's to be reinvested into your instructional priorities. And so that's a completely different model. It wasn't necessarily meant to, okay, we're going to abandon this initiative, you know, two months into it or a year into it, when it's a three- or five-year plan, because we want to go a different direction over here. That wasn't how it was set up. But yes, you can abandon that, but I really challenge this board to think about, because we set up a business model, and while, yes, I may get criticized for what comes out in a program evaluation, but I will stand behind that, because that's what it's there for. It's to show where we have things that need to be addressed and improved upon, and the only way you can make improvements is to call out what isn't working. But, and so, and so, you know, that's self-inflicted on my part. And yes, then we have your, you know, school board auditor that's doing their audits, then we have the state audit. All those things are coming, and the program evaluation, all that structure and all those efficiencies were built to make the system better and to align and to move this district with innovative things, so it can be progressive and cutting-edge. But that's, that was the whole philosophy of that. Now, if you want to change and go a different direction, that's fine.
I completely understand the philosophy, and I think the process is great. You know, I'm not questioning that at all. I think that we, it's very smart for us to do that, and, you know, other districts certainly have looked to us to understand that process. Don't question that at all. Absolutely perfect. Love it. I guess what I question is, being, the idea of trying to do all these new innovative things when we're not covering the basics. And so that's what I'm trying to seek to rectify, making sure that teachers have the supplies that they need.
I agree with you on that, and that's, but that's why we didn't take operating dollars to do that. We looked for efficiencies that were not found before. So, and again, I guess the instructional priorities of helping struggling students, helping move and implement standard-based instruction, to me, those are basics.
Can I ask a question? So if we come across an item, and let's just go back to the discretionary funds, if we choose to move money from one to another, and we've already done tentative approval, that tentative approval won't change as long as the dollar amount on the bottom line doesn't change. Like, I'm trying to understand, if we approve this tonight, but then we make changes to it, do we have to come back and do another tentative approval, or is it the bottom line that we're approving at the end? So the adjustments will just be made within the document, but staffing would need to be done as soon as possible if the direction of the board was to do staffing? Like, that's where I'm.
Staffing is already done for the year, because we're in it.
So outside of staffing, in the line items?
Outside of staffing, right now, you know, it's a fluid document.
Right.
And every month, the first board meeting of every month, you will see budgetary amendments.
Right. We have.
That's where, okay, the electricity came in higher, so we need to move money here to do that, because there are some have-tos there with that. I mean, you've got to make sure you have supplies to operate the school, so you've got to make sure that you have, you know, electricity, you've got to make sure you have postage, all those things there.
I just wanted to see if the tentative approval, that will remain set if the bottom dollar stays the same?
The bottom dollar is non-negotiable at this point in time. That's set by the state.
There is no more dollars coming.
No?
Yes, that's what that accounts for.
Gotcha.
It's really balanced at this point.
That's right.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and your ability to change it is limited only by the contract you entered into.
Would your microphone, please? Excuse me?
Microphone.
Microphone.
I think if you just pull it, it's on, it's just.
It's limited, the changes you make.
Makes sense.
Whether it be personnel or contracts for goods and services that you would have executed for that fiscal year before you made those changes.
There we go. There we go.
Thank you.
One more time.
The ability to change the budget would be limited by the execution of any contracts for teachers or other personnel, or for goods and services that you had entered into for this current fiscal year that would already be in place and that you would have to honor.
Thank you.
So this is essentially where the rubber meets the road on all those new positions on the strategic finance plan, because by approving this, those folks will end up with contracts for the year, and.
Okay, and I think we're, I think we're all on the same page. We're just on a different time zone, if you will, because the positions that have been approved and are hired and in place to start this school were part of the strategic finance plan that was done last September, October, November, that time. that timeframe. So, we're turning, we'll get schools started. We will come back in September, October, November, that window of time, and we will look at what's in that strategic finance plan then. If you want, you don't want to have these positions, you don't want this, that's all part of that discussion there. And that will take effect then the next year, because we honor the contracts that are in place. But then those contracts are not there to be offered for the next school year. So, that's the cycle. And that was the whole purpose of the strategic finance plan, was to get ahead of it. And so, we're actually doing it a year ahead of where we are. And so, because talking about positions now, it's too late because you have to have people hired, or you do have people hired. And then to change and go a different direction, you have to honor those contracts that are in play. But you have this discussion, that's why we put the, that's the whole purpose of the strategic finance plan, to be a year ahead.
I think my one final hesitation, if I could say it now once again, would be that we don't have any numbers in front of us for how this budget compares against our findings from Engage LCS. That if we put $300,000 of our own funds towards that, that we were putting some stock into it, and we're not taking into account those findings in developing this budget. We don't know how much, what percentage of our budget now is going towards instructional?
Yes, you do. We have a strategic finance plan that has a three-year picture.
Do you know the percentage?
I didn't bring this strategic finance with me, but, I mean, I didn't bring that tonight. But, I mean, I'm sorry.
Well, when we went through the strategic, and I think you had your first sit too this year, right? You went through it. Then, we as a board, before y'all came on board, we made a conscious decision that we were going to redeploy over three years, $30 million back to the classroom. We met it the first year by an extra 100 grand, and we met it again this year when she went through it with us. And so, this was y'all's first time, so you may have just seen where it is now. But we're on track to meet that strategic plan of redeploying $30 million over three years back to the classroom. Breaking it down every line item, I can't do that for you either. But I know that we're on track about that. And so, and within the strategic plan, I would caution that where we have goals that we've accepted, sort of all of us now, buy-in, if you begin to dismantle it one piece at a time, the whole thing could collapse. That would be my only concern.
And I think the other thing, too, is that, and you have a really good memory, Mr. Mathias, for recall on that. I think the other thing, too, is that dollars to instruction and the classroom, ERS to find classroom in the purest of sense didn't necessarily count. Services that were in that classroom, it was a teacher and whatever that teacher's budget was. They did not get into teacher assistance or a teacher that was non-load-bearing going into that classroom and providing services. Guidance counselors weren't included in that. When we do know, all those positions play a part in the instructional delivery of education in Lake County schools. So, again, you have to make sure you're comparing the apple to the apple, the orange to the orange.
So, in other words, that 53% may be skewed, which is fine. But I guess, you know, if we apply that same set of parameters to this budget, does that number 53% increase or decrease, and by what? And the same held true for administration and for professional development. What happens to all of those numbers?
And see, 53% came from ERS and their methodology. The state of Florida breaks down the budget based on the function codes, objects, as you are. So, you will see something called instructional, but ERS went in and broke it down into, well, we're not going to, CRT. Well, that's an instructional position, but we're not going to count that. But in our budget, that's in an instructional line item. So, almost to do the ERS, you have to plug it in back through their methodology and break it down. And our reports are defining instruction a little differently in the state of Florida. So, that's why when we went back, we also were looking at it from the state of Florida, comparing one district to another, because that was the criticism we got, that that was only looking at these five or six or seven non-Florida districts. And everybody defined positions differently. And so, that's what Carol has been working on, and she's been getting information. And a lot of this we're having to do by hand because you have to go through record by record, because how is it defined to look at? Not that we can't produce reports, but the reports may not be defining an instructional unit the same way from state to state, like ERS did, so.
I'm really glad, since this is the first time I've ever done this, and we're like 10 minutes over our time limit, so we've won. Okay, any more comments?
No.
Okay, it's on you now to recommend.
Did we take a vote?
No.
No.
Sorry, we just had discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
At this time, I'd like to recommend that the board declare that the final budget hearing for the approval of final millage rates and budget for the 2015-16 fiscal year will be held on Tuesday, September 8, 2015, in the Lake County School Board Room at 5:05 PM.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation that the board declare the final budget hearing for the approval of the final millage rates and budget for 2015-16 fiscal year will be held on Tuesday, September 8, 2015, in the Lake County Schools Board Room at 5:05 PM.
So, moved.
Second.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the board concerning the time and place for this final budget hearing? See, and no one? Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
This concludes the required action for the first public hearing on the 2015-16 tentative millage rates and budget for the Lake County schools.
This meeting is closed. And we'll take a, what, five-minute, you think? Just five minutes, five-minute break, and we'll get started again.